Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The September 11th meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission is now in session. I think it's appropriate today that we pause for a moment of silence in remembrance of the tragic loss of life one year ago today. Proceeding then, and as we do just what we do here in the city of Palm Springs and around the country is important, but we have to keep it in perspective. Report of posting of agenda, please, Mr. Evans.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The agenda was posted last Friday in accordance with state and local procedures.
Thank you. First item before us is public comments. Anybody wishing to address the commission on planning issues in the city of Palm Springs may come forward and do so at this time. If you are here on an agended item, we would prefer that you withhold your comments until the item is called. However, you may proceed at this time if you prefer. Seeing no one, we'll close public comments. Our public hearings are-
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think we may have sent out maybe late the August 14th minutes.
Yes.
Not sure if you've had a- the commissioners have had a chance to go up.
You know, we just received those, and I've had a chance to review them as- have the commissioners had an opportunity? A number of people are shaking their head no. Perhaps we'll just move that down on the agenda and take a moment during the course to review the minutes, and we'll remember to call that later on. Our public hearing items are notice for 2:00, so we'll jump down to architectural approval item number five, case 3.1018, the application of Robert Rosenau for architectural approval of the Pepper Tree Inn located at 645 North Palm Canyon Drive. Staff report, please.
As you remember, this is the site of a previous variance some months ago. The item before you today is strictly the architectural review portion of the remaining building three. This was reviewed and approved earlier in the year by the Design Review Committee. We have- want to call your attention to condition number 33 and give you a little bit of background on this. As you may be aware, this is the site of a former restaurant, and it's an older property. In this condition number 33, engineering 33, references made to an existing covenant on the property dating back to 1958. The covenant was entered into at that time when the property owner was granted an encroachment permit for a five-foot encroachment into the ultimate right-of-way on the property. The proposal today features a tower and a structure that would also encroach into the future right-of-way, which I'll walk you through in a moment. But we wanted to call your attention to the fact that there is an existing covenant on the property and that should the planning commission approve the project this afternoon, the city council would be asked to follow up and grant an encroachment license. I'm going to approach the boards now and kind of walk you through. For orientation purposes, Indian Canyon, Grand Via Valmonte, Palm Canyon Drive. This is the exhibit of the earlier variance with the Phase III of the restaurant, as well as the two-story building and retail. Here we have this use. North is this way. The restaurant site, and we have the proposed tower, arcade, existing building, and then where the rooms would go and a retail use in this area. There's also a proposed tower and arcade running east-west along the side. In terms of the property and the existing right-of-way, the ultimate right-of-way pursuant to the general plan for this portion of North Palm Canyon Drive would be 50 feet, which is delineated by this line right here. The applicant is requesting for permission to construct the arcade and the tower in the future right-of-way. As noted here, the ultimate right-of-way based upon general plan designation of North Palm Canyon Drive would have a 38-foot half-street or a curb running right here. Therefore, I wanted to call to your attention that the edge of the proposed arcade and proposed tower would be in the ultimate right-of-way and within the street section. The applicant is aware of this and would desire to move forward under the covenant that they would be required to remove any improvements in the event of a future expansion. They're pretty confident that in the 44 years since the original covenant was entered into in 1958, there has been no widening, and they're hoping essentially for another 44 years. With this said, I'll kind of walk you briefly through the architecture. These were the plans that were approved by Design Review some number of months back. There were revisions in terms of minor details for screening in this area, as well as detail here, and then in this area. Essentially, what's happened is since the project was designed, the architect has had a chance to refine and add some additional architectural detail. As proposed, a smooth stucco, two-piece clay tile, and it will be a nice addition to existing development in the area and consistent with the rest of the Pepper Tree Inn. A representative from the engineering department is scheduled to attend and answer any questions you may have in regards to the covenanteding issue. And the applicant's representative is also here and available to answer any questions. This will conclude staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, or staff? Ms. Conrad?
Alex, I'll just ask you now, since as part of this resolution, you talk about the Grand Via Valmonte right-of-way vacation, and I wonder if you could go through the details of that?
Certainly. Let me grab my conditions, and I'll kind of walk you through them. These are the identical conditions that you reviewed during the recent variance. And what we're talking about here is that the city is initiating right-of-way vacation for the northerly 20, 20.5-foot portion of the existing 32 and a half feet north half of the street. It's depicted here. This exhibit also shows, to some extent, an earlier rendition. What happens is that the existing curb is located right here. This portion would be granted back to the property owner, not as part of this project, but as part of the current roadway realignment of North Indian and North Palm Canyon Drive. Essentially, this is going to be reconverted back to a two-way corridor, and there will be also the addition of parking in this area, right next to the park. But that is really not subject to this application. That's separate approval that was included in this entitlement by way of the earlier variance.
And I realize that, and the reason I bring it up is because there's a number of encroachment issues that have to do with the park, and since it's all going to be resolved with, I think, this motion, I just wanted it to be clear what goes on on Grand Via Valmonte, so.
Very good. Any other questions?
Alex, I just had a question. Three of the conditions, and I guess they are engineering conditions, but 34, 35, and 36 have asterisks next to them. Is there a reason why that's depicted that way?
Yes, those are also to be covenanted. Those are the future road widening provisions. Essentially, we're asking the applicant to enter into an irrevocable offer of dedication to provide the city with the right-of-way, but we're not asking him at this point to make the street improvements.
That's on the east side? This is referring to that same section about what you spoke? I understand the applicant is here. Would you like to address us on this matter? Give us your name, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. James Chioffi, architect. I'm here on behalf of Bob Rosenau, who couldn't attend. He's currently in the hospital up north, so he asked me to attend and help him. I've been consulting with Bob on the- I helped him with the variance application for the restaurant site when we tore down the gas station, and we're currently looking for a user for that, helping him with that. And this proposal, though, is for the existing building, which you might remember is called the Lamb's Garden, I think it is. And it's kind of a mess right now, but Mr. Rosenau's purchased that and is ready to remodel it per these plans. The plans you see behind Ms. Conrad there are in plan check at the building department right now, and we're just awaiting this approval today to proceed. In regards to the encroachment, we will be asking the city council for an encroachment license for the arcade. We do that all up and down Palm Canyon Drive. We've done it before. We did it just recently with the White Brothers down at 310. It makes a nice covered walkway. We don't think the city will ever widen that street. We have two historic structures just north of the street that are well out within the right-of-way that can't be demolished, so we're confident that that will be okay with that. We think down the road, we probably ought to get into a study and talk about narrowing the street, not widening it anyway. I think it doesn't need to be wider than it is, but that's a separate issue. But that's why we're confident that we can do this. It adds a lot to the architecture. It'll help the retail part of the building. And we're proposing a new palm tree well, which will coordinate with Jerry Bogburn. And we're just happy to be here. We've tried to get on this agenda for several months. We had some conflicts, and my client's very anxious to proceed with this improvement. He's put a lot of money into this property, and he'd appreciate your support today.
Any questions or comments with regard to Mr. Chioffi while he's still at the podium? Mr. Schomburger?
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to figure out the drawing. Does this have a- is the end of the structure that we're seeing on the board, it looks like it has a little canopy, and is that over the sidewalk?
Yes, sir. Can I approach the board?
Yeah, please do. If you'd use the microphone wire there, please.
That's the future right-of-way. The existing building right now is at this point. So if we were to accept the future right-of-way dedication today, we'd take five feet off of the building that's there now.
Jim, let me just ask you here.
That's over the sidewalk. Mr. Sch- the sidewalk varies in there. You can see it.
Well, the sidewalk's out here.
Partially. People will walk underneath this, but through the sidewalk.
But this doesn't come out to the street edge?
No, sir. It's still about five feet back from the curb.
All right.
The curb is approximately there.
Okay. Ms. Conrad?
I think that there's a long tradition of covered sidewalks in Palm Springs from the Licken Building to the El Paso Building, and that it is a lovely addition to the architecture, and that doesn't bother me at all. And the reason I- not only are there historic structures immediately to the north of this project, there is the Class 1 Historic Site, which is probably the one that would qualify more than any other site in the city to be on the state's register as well as the national register, and it is surrounded by Francis Stevens Park, which is ever getting more encroached upon. And so my point about Grand Via Valmonte, as well as this, is that Palm Canyon should not ever be widened in this location because we would compromise our historic resources. And Grand Via Valmonte, this should be the last iteration of Grand Via Valmonte also, and I say that for the record as my opinion. And with that, I would move the approval.
Sir, a second?
A second. But I have a question before we go to-.
Sure.
Doug, my only concern with that extension into the right-of-way would be a safety concern. And we didn't have a kind of a pillar there within five feet of the street edge, and I take it that engineering's looked at this, and they're not concerned about it? Or have they reacted to it, or are they aware of it?
Yeah, the engineering department looked at this, and they would prefer that there not be an arcade out over into the right-of-way. I think it's more general principle than physical design. I think we've looked at this, and I think we've looked at location of tree wells and street furniture. As I recall, there's about a six-foot walkway underneath, and I think, you know, in this area, we probably have adequate facilities to get around it or underneath it.
Okay. So, but they're not- if they were jumping up and down anxious about it, I guess they would be here to say so.
Well, their position on issues like this is they would prefer that the planning commission make the decision. Ultimately, the council has to approve an encroachment license, so the council makes the decision of the encroachment. I think this is consistent with what we've done in the past, both historically and in contemporary times, and I don't think we see it as a particular problem for pedestrian flow.
And I'm thinking more of vehicular flow as a danger possibly, but in trying to think about that location, we have trees and benches and stuff that are that close to the street anyway, do we not?
You'd have to make a sharp left-hand turn to hit this and not hit the palm tree right in front of it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. It's in a pretty good location.
The palm tree will protect it. Mr. Schomburger.
Ms. Moran, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I did have one question because I wasn't here for any of the prior discussion. The development that's on Indian Canyon, that is all part and parcel, and it is the same?
Yes, it is. It's the same owner. Mr. Rosenau purchased Pepper Tree a couple of years ago and has been remodeling it, and then he recently acquired the corner property where the gas station was and included the Lamb's Garden.
Because what he's done, what's been done on Indian Canyon is just fabulous.
Yeah, he's been stepping to the plate, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask the architect a question with your permission?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chioffi, have you taken a look at the architectural detailing of this building relative to the existing, you know, corner elements, all the window detailings, things of that nature?
Yes, I have, and I'm working with Mr. Rosenau's architect to fine-tune some of that. I gave Alex some detail for some screen walls, and we're working positively with that. And Mr. Rosenau's asked me to do that.
All right. You know, normally, we bring architectural approval items to the commission, and we still have a plan check, and I know we're in plan check. I just wanted to make sure that we're looking at those fine details. They're going to be real important on this one, and I'm comfortable with that answer, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. Anything further, then? We have a motion by Ms. Conrad, second by Mr. Schomburger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Mr. Chioffi. Still not 2:00. We'll go to architectural approval item number six, case 3.2237, application by Gondo Properties for architectural approval of the airport mini-storage located at 3950 Airport Center Drive. Alex, please.
This item was reviewed by the Design Review Committee on August 26th, and they had a couple of recommendations. First, substitution of an acacia species of tree. The applicant was comfortable with the substitution. The next item that Design Review looked at was movement of a wall of one of the existing storage buildings on the street frontage out about two feet in order to give a little more play and definition to the front of the building, and I'll walk you through that one. Then also the creation of an access area to perform maintenance of the rear landscape area, and also a little more attention to one of the roof connection details on the propped roof, and I'll walk you through that real quick. The engineering- the applicant was comfortable with all these revisions, and said they'd be able to comply with all of them, so I'll walk you through them. Then the engineering department provided for condition number 52, which calls for a vehicular turnaround outside of the gate of the project. The applicant has reviewed the proposed condition, has analyzed the site plan and the traffic that would be generated by the project, and believes that this condition is unnecessary. We've also reviewed a similar earlier approval of a mini-storage facility located about a mile and a half away. Hasn't been constructed yet, but it was a similar approval in terms of the time, about a year and a half ago. That approval did not require vehicular turnaround outside of the gate. What I'd like to do is kind of walk you through these issues real quick at the board, and then let you know our recommendation would be for approval on this item.
Yeah, if I could just comment on the turnaround. We agree that there needs to be the opportunity for a turnaround, but in most mini-storage facilities, the parking spaces that are outside the gate are rarely, if ever, fully used. Most of the people that come to these facilities are repeat customers, and they have access codes to get in, so you don't get as much stop, you know, have to figure out what I'm going to do, and then back out. So that's- the turnaround really is the parking spaces and the, you know, on-site, and that's how the planning staff looks at these types of projects.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay. For orientation purposes, we have Avnita Evalita right here and the Airport Center Drive. So this does back up to the airport property. In terms of the recommendations, Design Review requested that there be a way to access the site to the landscape area here for maintenance purposes. The applicant is in a design portion for building plans that would create a little doorway, walkway through here so that you could do the landscape maintenance. In terms of the vehicular turnaround, the engineering condition would require some sort of area to maneuver and do your turnarounds right here. In terms of the distance from property line to the gate, the applicant has complied with that distance recommended in the condition of minimum 50 feet. Looks like it's about a little over 63 feet. But engineering was concerned about having adequate vehicular turnaround in this area. In terms of the building movement, the Design Review Committee thought that this building here could be a little more interesting. Is the street frontage this elevation? Right here. If the building was pushed out about three feet, they could still comply with the setback provisions, and would essentially move from here to here, pulling it closer to the street, essentially breaking the wall plane. The applicant was comfortable with that and actually drew it on plan during Design Review. And then, lastly, the Design Review asked for a little consideration in terms of the architectural detail in these connection points right here. These areas in terms of providing for a little break in the way that the planes connected. The applicant was also comfortable with that. Lastly, the acacia species of some of the trees were changed to a more appropriate species for this kind of location. With that said, we invite the planning commission to ask any questions you may have. The applicant is present, and the engineering- city engineer is also present to answer any questions you may have regarding the conditions.
Thank you, Alex. Ms. Moran?
Alex, on the north side of the building, how high is the wall?
Are you talking about the back of building C?
Mm-hmm. That is the area that backs up to the airport?
That's correct. There are roughly 10-foot storage units? This is representative. They didn't provide each building, but they're essentially 10 feet to the top.
It will not present a security issue of any kind? High enough that nobody could get over from the other side, or there wouldn't be a problem?
The applicant's secure and feeling that the site will be adequately secured. There is an existing chain-link fence on the far back side that is designed for airport perimeter security and would, as such, would remain.
Alex, could you- maybe I'm just losing perspective. Could you point out where exactly this property is in relation to the airport? I know that it's directly- the airport's directly to the north. Maybe identify the occupants to the east and west of the property, and we don't- it's- there's no depiction on the map of Palm Springs as to where this is located, where Airport Center Drive is located.
Further down Airport Center Drive is the Gold Gym Complex, and then at this intersection, Avnita Evalita is the Geo Service Station.
Darko, isn't it?
No, no.
I think they changed the name of it.
Yeah, Darko.
Right. So east and west of the property is undeveloped right at this point?
That's my understanding, yes.
Ms. Matthews?
What's the material for the rooftops?
The rooftop material is a, I believe it's a built-up roof. Sorry. For the front portion or the main building, this is painted steel. It's an architectural-grade painted steel.
Well, you know what? Let me save you that. I really don't care what it is. What I don't want is I want to put a condition in there that there be no advertising on the rooftops. That's a condition I'd want to add.
Any other questions, or staff?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move the case if we're ready. I'd move case-
Nobody has another comment or question? That's fine. Go ahead.
3.2237 with the addition of condition that essentially says no rooftop advertising next to the airport.
Sir, a second?
I'll second that.
What about 52 turnaround?
Okay.
I'm going as submitted.
As submitted. It's the most impressive storage I've ever seen.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Matthews? Mr. Matthews, I didn't hear your comment about 52. Did you say you want to omit it?
No, as- well, wait.
Or include it?
Hold on.
It's number 53.
52.
52.
Oh, I got you.
52.
I'm willing to strike that. I think the drawings are fine, and haven't heard the compelling, so.
I'm okay with that.
Mr. Caffey, I'll give you an opportunity to comment if you'd like to.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to get a comment in before you made a vote, but I agree. We don't need to turn around there. Thank you.
Before we vote, though, Mr. Bracken hasn't addressed this issue. Did you hear all that, and do you understand what the approval or what the motion is?
Yes. Maybe I should explain why we have that, since it wasn't exactly true, if you want me to. The engineering department has always recommended approval of using parking spaces like that as turnarounds, and the reason that's in there wasn't for that, but it appeared on the site plan that there was a- some sort of a box or access point right up against the gate. And we traditionally have requested, and most of the time, planning commission has approved of an area beyond that box where if you get up to that point and you can't get in, you don't have to back out if somebody's behind you. And that was the reason for this. The previous project that Alex referred to didn't have that situation. That's why the parking spaces like this were approved and didn't have that condition. So if it's something like moving the box a little bit back farther so that if you can't get in, you can back into the space and get out, or reserving that one space for being able to turn around, either one of those would be certainly acceptable to engineering. The recommendation is just that if you get there and you can't get out, we would prefer you not have to, you know, back out.
Can that be addressed, Mr. Chioffi?
I'm not sure I understand what the problem is, because I think we made this exactly like the one we had a- like the one we had approved last year, which did have that space, so maybe there's something different on the drawing, but I'm sure we can work it out with Mr. Bracken.
But I, yeah, I would, I think I understand Mr. Bracken's point, I've had that trouble at many storages.
Sure.
Getting kind of caught, and for whatever reason, you can't get the thing to work, the code's not working, or you got the wrong code.
Right, no, we understand.
And you're stuck there, and you do need the ability to extricate yourself from that predicament.
Right, but the way this is worded, it doesn't say, it doesn't get specific about that, and generally when we talk about turnarounds, we're talking about seventy or eighty feet, which we can't do here.
No, we're not interested in that, that's not the point.
So I think if you work with Mr. Bracken on that, we can find a solution to that predicament, and then I'm fine with the motion.
Yeah, we will probably make it like we did the other one, which, and thank you for the comment on the architecture, we worked hard on it.
Just understanding the motion, then, it contemplates striking fifty-two, but that's what the commission's understanding, that some accommodation will be made between engineering and the applicant to address the issue.
Right.
Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Even though the clock in the end of the hall says that it's not two o'clock, the accurate reading is in the rear of the room, and it's well past two o'clock, so we'll go back to our public hearing items. Number two, which is case five point oh-nine-one-six, application by Matthew Dragasevich, Charitable Remained or Trust for a general plan amendment and change of zone to redesignate five point eleven acres of land located at forty-one fifty-five Matthew Drive from M-15 Medium Density Residential to G-C General Commercial and C Conservation, and to rezone from R-two Multi-Family Residential to R-one A-H Single Family Residential to C-M Commercial Manufacturing and O-twenty Open Land. And this is continued from the August fourteenth meeting. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned that this was continued, the commission wanted some additional information, and the applicant was not able to attend the last meeting, and had given me a request that if the commission was not comfortable with this, to have the commission hold it over, so that the applicant could actually address you, and I think the applicant is here today. Jing Yu will give you an overview of the proposal. Just as a refresher, I think the key issue that you were looking at was primarily the existing land uses and conditions of properties, and, you know, what we'll do is just get you back up to speed quickly with the properties involved and the locations, and then we can answer any questions that the commission might have, and then, obviously, the commission will open the public hearing and get public testimony.
Okay, just to give you a bit of a refresher, refresh memory on the property, this aerial photo showed us, shows the location of it. This is Matthew Drive, Cherokee Way, East Palm Canyon Drive. To give you an idea of the surrounding properties, to the north, you can see in these apartment complexes here. To the west is this property, it's, it used to be Desert Produce, it's being used now as something else, it's being converted. To the east is a vacant property, as you can see here, and to the south is pretty much all that hillside you see up there. It's greater than thirty percent slope, so development would be limited. As, you know, we'd said before at the previous commission meeting, this particular change of zone would be inconsistent with two general plan policies that we have, in terms of limiting commercial, extending that commercial use towards where Matthew Drive is, and the other one being, I think, yeah, it was limiting the commercial use to Matthew Drive. The other, the property itself is not in compliance with a number of property development standards, however, as a change of zone, we can't really attach any conditions to it, but obviously, if it was to be approved, there should be a number of things done to improve the property, namely, limiting the height of storage on the Matthew Drive frontage, you know, there's a boat and a number of trucks parked out there that are actually over the height of the wall. On the east side of the property, you can see here, that should be a six-foot-high wall, and also the outdoor storage there should be screened at the back, at the rear of the property. In terms of separation from residential uses, you can see in this photo here, it's about an eighty-eight-foot-wide separation between the boatyard and the auto body shop and the apartments, and then about three hundred feet to the mobile home park on Cherokee Way. That completes my overview, I know the applicant's available for questions, and so am I. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Schonberger.
Gene, let me ask you, behind, to the south, there's, it looks like there's a residence back there with some kind of a big, almost a storage facility behind that, is that a private residence?
That is, it's a single-family residence, yeah.
Right. And also, to the east of this property, there's a vacant parcel, and, which I think has been the subject of applications recently for residential. Am I right on that?
That's correct, is it? Parcel to the east?
Mr. Schonberger, I was talking to Alex, I missed your question.
Daydreaming, again?
Yes, daydreaming, I was.
To the east of this parcel, there is a vacant, there's vacant land, and if I remember, that land has been the subject of an application to build residential, for residential development.
We have brought to the planning commission in study session a pre-application for a senior condominium complex on that property, and then between the senior condominium complex, there is another parcel of land that has a single-family home on it, and I think the photograph of the palm trees is the entryway, as I recall, up to that single-family home. So actually, the immediate neighbor to the property that's subject of the general plan and zone change is a single-family home.
To the south.
That would be to the immediate east. Let me, would you like me to point it out?
Okay.
So you just get the differentiation. The way the parcels work, I'll show you first on the parcel map, the subject property for the R-two to C-M zone change is here.
That's the boatyard.
That's the boatyard, and the auto, that's this parcel. Then immediately next to it is this parcel here, which is the parcel that has the home, the home is here, and the RV storage building is back here, and then from there over would be the location of the residential project.
One other question for Gene.
Sure, please.
Gene, you mentioned that the site that's the subject of this application is deficient in a number of respects, particularly with regard to walls and the height of the storage, the stuff that's being stored there. In the conditions of approval, are those issues addressed?
Well, this is actually a proposal for like physical development of land, so technically we're not allowed to attach conditions of approval to this. It's for a change of zone, essentially changing the map, so we had no conditions of approval for this particular application.
This takes me back to refocus the discussion we had last time. We are here simply reviewing an application for a change of zone, which change of zone will also require an amendment to the master plan?
That is correct.
Okay. And we are not permitted to attach conditions to this, is that what I hear?
Essentially, the action before you is to change our maps.
Right.
It is not a land use issue. Now, if the commission's pleasure is you would like to see those properties improved, it can be done, you know, a number of ways. One, you could ask the applicant to make a commitment, and you could make it as firm, you know, as you would like them to, to make those upgrades. Now, they, the property currently is rented, so they may not have full control of it. The other one is you can direct us to do a code enforcement action on the property, which, now that we've been out there as much as we have, we will have to, we can't ignore it, but you could make that part of your recommendation, that we take code enforcement action. The city council's going to review, you know, your recommendation, they would also hear that, and I think Jiang went over some of the code deficiencies that the property doesn't comply with. We'd have to do a little bit of research to find out what was legally built and legally conforming at the time it was built, versus the things that are operational in the code, versus the things that were built without permits. So we could, you know, from an enforcement action, we can go out there and compel the prop, or the tenants, to start moving some of their storage around to comply with code. That's an operational provision, they don't have any non-conforming rights to store things in setbacks and outside the walls and things of that nature. Relative to walls, fences, and all that, we'd have to take a look, but again, that could be something you could direct us to take a look at and develop the screening. The property owner, you know, you might want to ask the property owner about, you know, how long are the existing rental contracts or leases, and whether or not the property owner ends up owning this property where they have the right to access and make improvements. So you could go down the road, just short of really adding conditions, and I think we can, we can work on the code enforcement part and remedy a good portion of the items, including general property maintenance and landscape.
The, again, though, so to focus what our options are, if we deny this application, then it's my recollection from our previous discussion, that within a short time, these become non-conforming uses.
They are non-conforming uses, and relatively short period of time, in theory, they become uses that should be abated.
Now.
We would have to start a process to do that.
Okay. Now, if we were to deny this application, and these uses become non-conforming, then as I recall, the applicant would have to come back with another application to which we could attach conditions.
The applicant could ask for a time extension for a non-conforming use, the maximum time that you can grant a time extension for a non-conforming use is two years, so you would have to see it, in theory, every two years if it were to continue, but clearly, if that were the case, and we're dealing with a non-conforming situation, at the time they need the time extension, they come back, ask you for that, and at that point, you can impose conditions.
Thanks.
This is a public hearing item, unless there are some further comments or questions, Ms. Morantz?
One question, are they operating the boatyard and the auto repair with a CUP right now, or?
No.
No? Okay.
No, they're old uses, that, the boatyard's been in there an awfully long time, we'd have to do a little research to date the actual, when the uses went in. Clearly, the, if you have residentially zoned property, the types of uses, regardless of when they actually went in, would still trigger starting in nineteen ninety-three with the general plan amendment.
Okay, I'll ask the rest of my questions after the public.
Okay, well, the primary reason for continuing this, as identified in the minutes and our recollection, was to find out how the property owner was going to bring some of these items into compliance, or what could be done, and obviously, the city has not, we don't have a report of what's, what the property owner's prepared to do or has done, and so as we go into the public comments, the applicant should be prepared to respond on those issues. This is the time for a public hearing, anybody wishing to address us on this agenda item, please come forward at this time, give us your name, sign the clipboard before you leave.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Lloyd Marianov, I'm a co-trustee of the Drogizovich Charitable Trust. There are two other co-trustees, Barry Boskovic, who's in the audience, and Peggy Steiner, who's not with us today. As I pointed out, this is a charitable trust, and what we're trying to do is maximize the value of the properties of the trust, so that we can give more to charity. The money does not go to us, we do not benefit directly, and I think that should be clearly understood. I'd like to clarify a couple of comments that I heard. Mr. Schonberg was asking about the property to the east, and also to the south, the residence. The residence is owned by Barry Boskovic, he comes right down to Matthew Drive and forms a buffer between this property, this property that we want zoned, and the residential, the senior housing that was referred to, property that we're also in escrow selling, we don't want to shake our own escrow, quite frankly. Our plans for the future for this property is rather fluid, as I said, we want to maximize the profit for the trust, which maximizes the amount we have to give away. We will either enter into long-term leases, or sell the property. If we sell the property, it would be with conditions. We're willing to improve the property, we're willing to meet your requirements for conditions, in fact, we started already talking to General Propulsion, the Boat Basin, they've done some cleaning up, and they are within their fences at this point. More than that, we have not been able to improve the property up till now, because we're in a non-conforming use, and we're on a month-to-month basis with our leases. So what we're trying for is to get ourselves in a sound position where we can go forward improving the property. As I pointed out, adjacent to the property is, on one side is the old Desert Produce building, which had been sold, and incidentally, we had nothing to do with the grading problem that they ran into, that was them, not us. And on the other side, Gary Boskovic, residential, one parcel, creating a complete screen between this property and the residential property that's going to be, we hope will be developed. Can I answer any questions?
Mr. Morantz, if there may be questions, after we close the public hearing.
Very good. I think there are a couple of other people in the audience who want to speak to this. Bob?
Robert Fay, I'm the broker involved in the property, so I, you know, not exactly There is a confusing issue I want to talk about for a minute. As I read the code, the non-conforming use is either twenty years or fifty years, depending on which section, which page you want to read of the non-conforming use, if there's no change in tenants, I believe it's fifty years, and it may date from nineteen ninety-six, so even if it's twenty years, that's a long time before we, before that boatyard has to move. The building permit was issued, by the way, in nineteen sixty-three, for Palm Springs Welding, which was the original use of that property way, way back. As Lloyd mentioned, the boatyard has already made some improvements, and I just finished a meeting with the person in escrow, the group in escrow on the senior housing, and they have no objections to what's being planned. The monkey wrench that I would like to throw into the, and I apologize to the planning staff, but the city clerk only gave us this stuff this morning, although we'd asked for it several weeks ago. In nineteen ninety-six, the planning commission and the city council, on a five-o vote, resolution one eight 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 four, approved a rezoning of this property to C-M, but apparently, that's never made it to the map. The zoning map still shows it as R-two, but in fact, this was approved, and there's five pages of conditions, all of which I've pages of, uh, conditions, all of which I believe were met at that time. Perhaps the conditions didn't go far enough, but the conditions that were imposed at that time were met when the new sidewalks and curb and gutter and sewer and all that was put in. Uh, and, uh, that was, that property was approved as a C-two zone, C-two and CM. Uh, back in, I know Doug, you can do some research on this, but this case was the clerk's resolution. Uh, and I apologize, we only got it today, which really throws a monkey wrench into it. If in fact, you and the council approved it in ninety-six and just the map is wrong, then we shouldn't even be standing here talking about this. Uh, but at that point, there were conditions imposed which were met, the new sidewalks, curbs, setbacks. I realize they don't meet today's standards, but they met the standards in ninety-six. And the last thing I guess I'd like to say about that is, um, they started some work. Those pictures actually make every, the whole neighborhood look a lot better than it is. And I don't think there's any disagreement that, uh, that neighborhood could use, not just this property, it could all use some work. I went out there, despite the data on the camera here, a couple of days ago and took these pictures and I would give them to you for your, uh, use. Even the trailer park is nothing more than a bunch of trees and telephone poles. That end of the park is just a disaster. That's at the west end of this property. Uh, nothing to be proud of. Uh, I wish the whole street would be cleaned up. It would add to the value of the property. But I'm going to give these to you for your study. They're, they're smaller, but, uh, they're taken without embellishment. And again, I would answer any, any questions that you might have at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Fay. Anybody else that wishes to address us, please come forward at this time?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Gary Boskovic. I am the owner of the parcel of property that is between the boatyard, the auto body shop, and the property that's going to be developed in the future. Personally, I think this is a, a good venture. I have no objection of what we're trying to do. I am a trustee of the, uh, one of the, uh, trustees of the, uh, group. And, um, if we can have this go through, it would make a, quite a nice enhancement toward the trust for the charity work that my aunt, Virgie Dragisovich, would like to have us do. And I thank you for the opportunity in speaking to this group today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll close the, uh, public hearing. Uh, Mr. Evans, before we, uh, debate this further, perhaps you can, uh, comment on the, the status of the existing zone and whether it was amended prior or where we stand?
Well, the, uh, you know, clearly in nineteen ninety-three, the city changed the general plan, you know, to set in place a zoning consistency program where we came back in and then changed the zoning on property. We have, at the last round of zone changes, we have not put onto the zoning map. We, uh, don't have a computerized zoning map, uh, graphic system. Um, I'm currently working on getting that done so we can update the zoning map. So, there are some areas on the map that you would pick up today that have older zoning. Um, clearly, uh, after, um, I believe the, the document that I just looked at very quickly was a subdivision map creating the parcels. Uh, it was not a, um, change of zone. Changes of zone are done by ordinance. That was, that was a resolution that I just looked at. Um, if you would like, we could take a quick break. We could give you the exact date. The change of zone to R-two occurred, uh, but I believe it occurred subsequent to the approval of the map Mr. Fay referred to in nineteen ninety-six. We did two rounds of zoning text amendment, or zoning map amendments. Uh, we still have a third round we've not been able to get to, uh, coming out of the nineteen ninety-three general plan amendments. So, I, I think the, the issue, you know, is, you know, still the, the way we reported in the staff report, that you've got, you know, existing zoning of residential. They would like to bring it back to where it was, uh, which was CM at the time they subdivided these parcels. Um, that the, um, non-conforming use issue, uh, is different from non-conforming buildings. Um, some of these buildings may be non-conforming. A non-conforming building means one that doesn't comply with the setback regulations or the parking regulations. It might be in the setbacks, things of that nature. In theory, could be over height. That's a non-conforming building and our zoning ordinance does have a schedule based upon the type of construction on how long those non-conforming buildings can exist. If you go to the next section of the ordinance, it talks about non-conforming uses of improved land, which is what we're looking at here. It's a, uh, commercial manufacturing type use in R-two zone. It's a non-conforming use of the land. And that, uh, basically, uh, says, uh, that, uh, you can continue the use provided you don't make changes. Uh, there's some additional provisions. And then termination of non-conforming use, uh, basically says that termination of non-conforming use shall occur within ten years of the date the property became non-conforming unless extended, uh, pursuant to the extension criteria, and that's the one that, um, has a limit of two years. So, there, there's a difference and, and I can tell you the non-conforming section of the ordinance is very confusing for me. Um, you have to read it very, very carefully. Um, and it's, it's, it's kind of awkward, but there's a difference between structures and buildings versus use of land.
In terms of the zoning, though, you're comfortable that the application is accurate as it's before us and is recited in the staff report?
Uh, yes, I am. Well, you know, we'll obviously double-check it, but, uh, you know, we, we did some research beforehand. We'll just double-check it, uh, but we think the action before you is the appropriate, uh, application. The zoning, as we've represented, is what we believe is the accurate zoning. Um, as always, we'll go back and check original documents when somebody asks a question.
Very good. Back to the commission then for questions, comments. Ms. Morantz?
Well, I, I'm not much further along than I was before. However, I, I'm still, I have no problem at this point with the change of zone at all. However, I just feel that these two areas, the, the auto repair and the boat repair are just a blight on the area. And they either, I don't care if it's a five-foot setback or a ten-foot setback, whatever the code says for whatever time it was. I feel very strongly that the, the, the two businesses need to be screened. They need to have a, screened from the street. I can't believe that any of the neighbors across the street, I know it's low-cost housing over there, but that, that really shouldn't be the issue. The issue should be the fact that these businesses are just continuing to add, to add and to add, and there's a boat almost out into the street. Well, maybe it got moved today, but I know it wasn't moved in the last couple of days because I do drive that street to avoid the traffic sometimes. And, um, I'm not sure I understand, if we approve the change of zone, there is no way to attach any type of conditions to that. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Well, you, you know, I, I can tell you that normally we don't. You're going to, you're going to be making a recommendation to the city council. Um, you can make the recommendation in the form that the commission as a body is comfortable with. If you oppose a regulatory portion to this, I'm going to tell you that the city attorney is likely to say that that really shouldn't be tagged on to a change of zone, but it clearly would become part of your report to the city council. And then, you know, I could, uh, work with the city attorney and come up with possibly a method to do that. Um, you know, if, if you're really want that and you want the legal position before you act upon it, um, we would have to probably continue this item again based upon a motion that you give me. You know, and I'd prefer that it be done that way, that the commission make a motion to, if, if you've said the motion is to approve the change of zone subject to the following conditions, uh, and you want to know exactly how you would format that in the strongest legal position, I'd suggest you make that motion and add to the end of it, uh, in directing staff and the city attorney to report back the best legal mechanism to do that. We'll bring it back for your, to your next meeting, uh, for your final adoption before this goes up to council. Uh, I think there's a way through giving us very strong direction to work with the applicant.
To do it now.
To do it now. And, uh, if you want, you could then ask me to, again, talk to the city attorney and see if there's a way to hook it in on a change of zone that he feels is, is defensible. And again, that's part of your recommendation to council and we would, uh, carry that charge if we could find a way to do it that's a little bit tighter than just something that's tagged along with your motion as a directive.
Mr. Evans, is, is, when, when would this come to council if this was approved? How much time left?
If you were to approve it, we would bring it to council roughly in thirty days. We'd have to take a look at the scheduling and the calendars, but the sequencing is somewhere between three weeks and, and thirty days.
So, depending on, uh, what type of conditions we chose to improve, if we did, uh, could we make a recommendation to the city council that as they review it, that they, that they not grant the zoning change or that they consider, uh, what, what the applicant has done during the interim thirty days, uh, as to whether they should grant it?
You certainly could. You could articulate your concerns and ask the council to make sure that the applicant comes forth with a, a program. Um, and then you could ask us to ask the city attorney if there's a way to make that a little bit more binding on the change of zone.
Mr. Chuck.
Mr.?
I guess question, Doug, and you alluded to this. Can we accomplish the same thing through code enforcement to get the thing cleaned up so that we don't have to go through the legal maneuvering? I mean, a lot of this appears, as I drove by, it's code issues, that it just needs to be cleaned up that we should have addressed quite some time ago.
Yeah, we, we, you could attack it that way. It, uh, puts us into the, you know, the code compliance and nuisance abatement program. Um, obviously, there's a, a life of its own relative to timeframe, relative to cooperation from the property owner and the tenants. Um, by putting it into at least a, um, a motion that acknowledges the concern to the council, it raises the level and the council will then say, this is an issue that we're going to at least ask questions about, uh, during the public hearing. And it gives the applicant the ability to try to come up with a program and a strategy that if the council says, we want to know how firmly this will be done, the applicant's been given advanced notice that they have three to four weeks to prep up for that. And, uh, but the code enforcement method, I'm, I'm confident we could make a substantial improvement of the property. Uh, I just can't tell you that the applicant, or the property owner or tenant would cooperate as fast as we might be able to do it with, with the leverage of a zone change.
Mr. Catherine?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, when I first looked at this, this was kind of the way I was going as well with the, uh, some way to attach some conditions. But after the testimony and hearing from, uh, Mr. Marionoff and the others, and they are, uh, well-respected members in the community as well as the trustees of the tru, charitable trust, uh, they have no motivation, in my opinion, to, uh, to do anything other than to raise money for the trust. Okay? It's not for themselves. So, and, and for charities. So, when you approach it that way and you think, okay, if they, if they get a zone change, that doesn't add a dollars worth of value to the property. The only way they can get value back in the property is to either sell it or redevelop it. Uh, so, it doesn't make sense that they would do a zone change and then not do anything with the property, in my opinion.
Schoenberg?
Um, I, I, I went up and looked at this property, uh, either yesterday or the day before, and, uh, uh, I, I agree that, uh, it really is a blight on that neighborhood. Uh, I, I had seen it from, uh, from, uh, Palm Canyon, but I had not until I made this visit, went back and actually looked at it and got out of the car and walked around. And, uh, it, it's, it's awful. I mean, I was shocked, uh, there's boats all over the place, there's junk up against the hill, uh, stuff stored all over, um, that, uh, the, uh, the body shop is, is, uh, you know, uh, I just was, uh, was appalled by the condition of that property. Um, there, there's the Sahara Park to the west that's screened from this property by oleanders which are now dying. Um, there's a, a, um, residential, uh, albeit low cost, but still a residential, uh, development right across the street, and we've got a new residential development going in. I don't know, I guess, I, I think of it as to the east, um, which will look right into that boatyard. I mean, the, the house, Mr., uh, the house that's to the, to the east or, or southeast of this property doesn't screen that new development from the boatyard. Those people will look right into the boatyard. Um, and, uh, so, uh, my feeling on this is that we need to do what we can to, uh, to, to force, uh, the owners of this property to clean it up. And I don't mean just, uh, take, uh, taking down the height of the boats. Uh, they're, they're, from, from the east, if you look in, you can see everything in that boatyard. I mean, and, and, uh, that, this property, in my opinion, needs to be walled. Uh, it needs a, 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 a high wall around the entire property. Uh, and the, the material that's stored there needs to be, uh, we need to get, impose a condition that it be not higher than the height of that wall, at least to be seen from surrounding properties. So, um, um, and, and the only way I can see, Doug, that we can, that, that we can force that, and I'm not, I, I don't feel prepared today, uh, to sit here and, 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 and write the conditions. Uh, I, I think staff ought to write those conditions and then it ought to come back and we ought to have a chance to review those conditions, have a hearing on them and discuss them, whether we think those conditions are going to achieve the result that we want. So, my, my, my thought on this is, is to deny this application. And, uh, I realize this may not be, uh, a, a very popular decision with the applicant, but I don't see how else we're going to get this done. Uh, would be to deny the application, uh, and put the applicant in a position of, of applying for an extension of the use, which I'm not opposed to. I'm not opposed to this being a commercial use. Uh, but if it's going to continue as a commercial use, then I would like to have the opportunity to put some conditions on that use that will clean this up and clean it up in a, in a, in a significant way and not put code enforcement out there, uh, time after time after time to try and do a Band-Aid, uh, cleanup of it. But I mean to get this property improved and cleaned up so that it's not, uh, uh, it's not, um, a detriment to, to everything else in that neighborhood. So, that would be my thought. And, uh, I, I guess they would have a year, uh, or so, um, in which they can continue the use, and then they're going to have to come in and apply for an extension. And, uh, at that point, if we're going to extend the use or approve the zoning, maybe whatever at that point, but they've got to come back, uh, and give us, uh, an opportunity to impose some, some real conditions on, uh, on that property to get it cleaned up once and for all.
Additional comments? Ms. Con, you want to follow through? We'll get to you. John?
Uh, my whole thought process on that, that particular issue is that, uh, if we can, if we deny the application, then essentially what we're doing is we're, uh, freezing that property because they cannot make changes to it, uh, because it's a non-conforming use. Am I correct on that, Doug?
All the changes that they make would have to be conforming. So, if they come in and try to do some things to shield and screen that you could do in the CM zone, you might not be able to do the same thing in the R-two zone. Um, so there, we'd have to take a look at what specifically you might do to remedy some of the issues. Certainly perimeter walls and things of that nature you could do in either zoning classification.
The, the way I'm looking at it is that if, if we approve the zone change, that gives the property owner the tools to improve the property, as they said, to maximize their asset. asset value. It makes perfect sense to me.
Ms. Conrad, I didn't mean to cut you off before.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I have two questions. One is, if the zone change goes through, and I'm, I'm very sympathetic to the trust and to what it's trying to do, but if the zone change goes through, are some of the nuisance issues now no longer on the table? Like, by making it, by changing it to a CM zone, do they get away with some of the things that are objectionable?
Well, by going to the CM zone, you switch to the property development standards that are more representative of this type of use. They would still have to have screening, actually in the CM zone, I'll double-check it, but my recollection is you can go up on side and rear property lines to an eight-foot-high wall versus a six-foot-high wall. So, you can add additional screening in the CM zone. The outdoor storage in the CM zone would still have to be screened, and materials should be kept below the height of the wall. Obviously, if you're, you're storing boats, you're not going to be able to hide them behind an eight-foot-high wall, and that would be no different than large vehicles and things like that. The real intent there is if you're stacking materials, things of that nature, that, you know, the use of the property involves things that are taller than an eight-foot-high wall. But it would allow the screening of the majority of the ground ailments, would require that they come back in and do some paving because they've got some areas where they're, they're actively working that are not paved, don't have suitable surfaces. So, I think the CM zone, you know, allows us to go back in and deal with the property in an appropriate fashion for that land use, whereas the residential zone, it'd be, you know, we'd be stretching here and there, and we'd probably never get to an eight-foot-high wall without a variance from the planning commission. Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify one item?
Please.
And we would have to just validate the exact date. The, I think we've, and it probably was my fault, we've kind of gone down the discussion thinking that the zone change occurred in 1993. It occurred after that. My recollection is it was about 1995. The document that Mr. Fay showed me says it's probably after 1996, so it was probably in it, it was either ninety-seven, ninety-eight. So, there's going to be some time for this to be a non-conforming use before we hit that ten-year mark. So, they're not going to be back within a year, and apologize if, if I've given the commission the impression that it's, it's right up on the clock, but it's, you know, in land use years, that's really fast, as far as fixing it. So, they have a period of time they could keep the land use. We still have code issues that, you know, after the commission takes action or the council takes action, we're, we're still going to have to talk to the tenants about their day-to-day operations and some of the code problems.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Caffrey?
Can I just, I have one, I just, one other question. I'm sorry. It's not clear to me, and maybe the applicant or Doug can answer. How does this behoove the city, since the general plan imagines a residential area up against the mountainside, and that was the intent of the zone change, how does it behoove the city to rezone this, to CM? And would you be doing it for any other reason, other than the fact that the current tenants have been there for a long time, and that they're successful businesses, and, and that's the whole reason? I mean...
This is a continuation of the dialogue the planning commission had in 1993. The question was, where should the zone boundary be? Should it be where the applicant today is asking that you do it, which respects the existing buildings on the grounds and the land use, and says, let us continue those uses? Or should it be over where Desert Produce is located? Or should it be all the way down to Cherokee and make it all non-conforming? Because, in essence, you've got the Mobile Home Park, you've got the, the larger vacant piece of land, you've got the apartments across the street, you know, should that be all residential? The commission in ninety-three, as they're saying, which parcel line to put it on, moved over right next door to Desert Produce because they felt that it matched up directly across the street with a small little commercial complex. It was property to property, whereas this property is really on the boundary, and then kind of to the east facing across from the apartments. So, there was, you know, it really was not something that I would say was a, anything more than a debate, and where the line was dropped, and the applicant's asking that you reconsider that, as opposed to completely change the plan of the, the city. You know, for twenty-plus years, this was all CM land, and the commission's viewpoint in ninety-three was, nothing's happened CM land-wise, except for these, you know, three land uses. It's a cove area, maybe it should be residential. The commission had a long debate, and, and, you know, over where does that boundary fall? So, we're just continuing that.
Mm-hmm.
It puts it right back, there's, there's, it puts it right back on the commission of saying, where, where should the appropriate line be?
Okay, back to Mr. Caffrey.
Did you have some questions?
I had a question.
Okay, Ms. Matthews.
I'd like to ask the applicant to come back up, and Mr. Marinoff would come up and be helpful. I got some questions. I am pretty thoroughly confused about what's going on, and why I am. I always turn to wise people and ask them, and, and there are probably no wiser in Palm Springs than you or darn few. Let me, let me ask a couple of questions and then get your thoughts, sir. The lessers of these properties, that's how the trust derives its income, is that correct? The, the, the businesses that are...
Right now, yes.
Are they, they're all leased individually? Is that how it works?
There's two leases, one for the auto body shop, and one for the boat base and general propulsion. Both of them are on a month-to-month basis, and as was pointed out by Mr. Caffrey, we're prohibited from doing anything until we have approval that we know we're there. If you don't give us the zoning, then how can we make improvements? We're willing to make the improvements that you want. We want to clean up the property also, but we want to know, once we put up a wall, that the building is going to be used commercially, not then you come along and say, well, now, we still don't want to make it residential. We still want to make it residential. And it's a parcel, as you've all looked at, that does not lend itself for residential use. You don't want us to go up the mountainside, and we don't want to go up the mountainside, but you've got a very small parcel there for a single-family home stuck next to the general, Desert Produce building.
The, that's what I thought I heard in the earlier testimony. It seems to me that the endpoint here of cleaning up the property, we're all in agreement on it. I, I don't sense that that's an issue. The, the, and that seems to be the strongest feeling around the table. Can't we table this for a couple of weeks, and you guys negotiate some kind of agreement to clean that up, either through code enforcement or whatever, that would result in a zone change, especially with the time? Can we give them a, a year or a period of time to do this, and say, hey, here's, you know, essentially work out a, you know, the equivalent of a development agreement that would, at the end, if these conditions are met, we'd consider, or we would actually implement the zone change?
We, we could put together, in a two-week period, a series of recommendations, and then ask the applicant if he could make that as a written commitment to the commission. In that period, I'd talk to the city attorney about a simple way to describe it a conditional change of zone, and see if there's a way to hook it, you know, into the ordinance for the change of zone, so it becomes, you know, essentially what needs to occur on the property. In two weeks, can we have a binding agreement between the city and the, the property owner? No. Development agreement is a very formal structure, but we could come back with a, a written recommendation from staff on specifics, and with commission's direction today, the applicant would have to, you know, have to come back and give you assurances that they're going to do these things. But we could certainly do that.
Well, let me ask, Mr. Marinoff, would it be in your best, or the trust's best interest to, I think you want the zone change so you can exercise some leases, is that correct?
Right, and that we have a commitment to the property, so that we can spend some money cleaning it up.
You know, for so many years, you were on this side of the table fixing properties and solving these problems. It seems to me that if we at least table it for, I mean, we could table it a year, and they could work on the development agreement. I, I'm not suggesting that's the idea, but we all seem to want the same outcome, which is clean up the property. I mean, it's a, what it is, is a historical property that's been around a long time, and it's a, you know, it really didn't evolve into this use, it's in this use, and it's, it's, you know, we've moved past it. We, the community, have moved past it, and it's a mess, and it needs to be cleaned up.
We're, we're willing to clean it up, if we know that we have the property use. If you rezone it residential, those buildings become useless to us.
Yeah, yeah.
You think it's really necessary to have a full-blown development agreement? I, I think that if, if the zone was changed, and the property owner came back with a plan and a commitment to bring it in conformance with the development standards for the commercial property, which means the screening wall and, and all of the, the other issues that, that are, that we're kind of describing as enforcement issues, and that that's, that proposal with, with some specificity is, is in place, and, and, and expressed as a, as a verbal commitment before the city council at the time that they review it, that would be sufficient. That's my general thinking. I don't, I don't...
Yeah, I, I'm comfortable with it. I just throw out development agreement. Frankly, in, in my experience, when Mr. Marinoff gives his word, it's good. But, but I'm trying to protect the city. So, so something less than a development agreement is fine with me. It just seems that, I don't under, I, I'm not following this debate, and maybe there's something not being said, but we all want the same thing, which is clean up the property, and, and to do that, he wants to achieve a zone, a zone change.
These are the issues that were raised by you, and by Mr. Schoenberger, and I think by Ms. Marantz and Ms. Caffrey, at the same time, at the, the time we continued this last time, and, and other than the assurances, again, we'll take care of it, we don't have anything more in detail. And I think we could probably craft some kind of a motion that tells the city council, when they, when they review it, it's done with the expectation that there will be a, that the applicant will be able to present to them a formal proposal and a verbal commitment that they will follow through on it, and they won't, that the city won't have to resort to code enforcement to accomplish these tasks, but that they're going to go forward. And Ms. Marantz?
Well, even though we were told that we would have some city attorney issues, I'm not opposed to approving the zone change and just having a little caveat, a little attachment on that.
As a condition, as a true condition. Yeah, that, that may be appropriate. I wouldn't oppose that either. If, if, if it's improper, the, the city attorney will, will, will have reviewed this and be able to tell the city council that they can't pass it as a formal condition. But there's nothing stopping us from doing it today, is what you're saying.
And the fact being that if the council reads that, they will know, and I would assume that they would also have done their homework and have seen it, and be in agreement with us as far as what needs to be done, or what should be done. And if I agree with what Mr. Matthews says, I mean, Mr. Marinoff gives us his word that it's going to be done, but he doesn't want to do anything until after this change of zone, I would agree with believing it's going to get done.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure, Mr. Schoenberger?
I, 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 and I probably know Mr. Marinoff better than anybody. I've known him since I moved to Palm Springs twenty-eight years ago. I've known Mr. Fay at least that long, and there are no two people I have more respect for. But I don't see that that's a proper exercise of our, of our responsibility. If we believe that certain conditions ought to be attached to, to the development, or, or any change with respect to this property, then I think our responsibility is to take the appropriate action, find out what those conditions are, and impose them. And, and I, I think that's our job, and not simply to rely on, on the good faith of the applicant. We wouldn't do it for anybody else, and I don't feel comfortable doing it here. And the other thing we don't know is whether Mr. Fay and Mr. Marinoff are always going to be the people who are calling the shots for this trust, and how long it's going to take them to do what Mr. Marinoff indicates he would like to do. So, I, I, I'm not comfortable with that. I'm not sure what the appropriate action is. But I think that if, if we truly believe that there are conditions that ought to be attached to the improvement of this property, and I feel strongly that, that there should be, then what I'm looking for is something that allows us to get to that point. And that doesn't, that doesn't impose any, put any undue imposition on these folks, which say that's what they want to do. But I think our job is to, is to require that it be done. Doesn't hurt them, but it protects the city, and I think that's what our task is.
Well, are you suggesting, then, that we, that we continue this matter, allow Mr. Evans and staff to come up with, with appropriate conditions, having to do with meeting the development standards of commercial zone, and that he also, on our behalf, at our request, consult with the city attorney and see if we can impose those conditions?
That, that's what I would feel comfortable with, and, and then I think everybody knows exactly what they're supposed to do, and what they're required to do. And if, it also gives the applicant an opportunity, if the conditions that staff thinks are appropriate, if they feel they're too onerous, they can come back and talk to us, and we can work it through the process as we normally do with respect to any piece of property where, where there's a proposed change. And that's what I would feel comfortable with, and, and if that takes a, a couple of weeks to, to work that out, then that property's been there like it is for, like it is now for many, many years, and a, a couple of weeks or four weeks isn't going to make that much difference to anybody. It's not like we're sitting on a bank loan or something, and, and, you know, each day that goes by is costing somebody a big chunk of money. I, I, I don't want to, for the applicant, I'm not trying to be difficult here at all, and I, I would like to, I don't have a problem with the use continuing to be a commercial use, but what I want to see, and what I think our, our responsibility is, is that there, somehow or other, we get some conditions in that you can live with, and that do protect the city, and that everybody knows where they stand.
Mr. Evans, do you have a comment? Can you give us some guidance?
I think the commission can take Commissioner Schoenberger's advice and say, let's come back with something as firm as we can. The commission could take the other proposal that's been on the floor, and say, let's, you know, one, we've had a commitment from the, the applicant. Two, the action before you is a map issue, and the other code issues have to get fixed, and that you direct us to work with the applicant to fix those. You know, either one, you know, has merit. It, it really is what the pleasure of the commission is. You know, certainly if we come back with something that's, that's written, specific, you know, the commission has something that you can say, this is our very specific recommendation on the property, whereas the other alternative was more general, and what we'll do is, is fill in what the code deficiencies are in our staff report. That's the commission's pleasure, so the council knows what the issues are the applicant needs to address from an enforcement standpoint.
I was going to say, considering this has been, you know, you know, in ninety-three, this same debate went on, I'm inclined to, John, make an emotion, and...
Well, I'd make a motion to continue this matter for two weeks, with the, with the request that staff come back with a, a, a set of conditions which will bring the property into conformance with the, with the zoning requirements, and give the applicant an opportunity to address those conditions, and, if we can, if we can attach them to this application, and, and if the city attorney tells us we can't do that, then I think we have to proceed in some other fashion. And, and that may be that we, as I suggested before, maybe one way is to deny this and let the applicant come back with a different application, or send it up to council and say, we don't know what to do with it. Other than, we'd like to see the property improved, but we don't want to deny the application.
Your motion is to continue to come back with a plan for conditions, and also to get the, the comments of the city attorney about our ability to impose those conditions.
Yes, that's the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman?
Motion by Mr. Schoenberger, second by Ms. Conrad. Do you want to make additional comments?
I would like to make a comment. I understand the motion, but my thought is still down the same line. We can achieve, I believe, the same exact thing and skip an extra step by make, because it is a recommendation. City council has the final decision on this, so we make a recommendation to have the properties cleaned up to the city council prior to them approving the zone change, and that gives them time between now and the city council meeting to get all their ducks in a row, get everything done, and have their agreement set, so that they can come prepared, and it can all be done with one more meeting instead of two more meetings. That was the whole point I was trying to bring up.
Additional comments, questions?
Uh, you know, my immediate reaction is generally to support such a thing, but this thing's been confused for a long time and I think we might as well button it up and so I'm inclined, I mean, I, I, guys have been at a lot of meetings, one more would be all right. And we ought to capture the agreement and, and, and find out where we stand legally because we may be doing exactly that at the next meeting based on the advice of the city attorney. I, I mean, the important point here is there's really no dispute. I think both sides want to clean up the property, so let's just get that done.
Mr. Evans, is two, is two weeks, uh, sufficient time?
I would like to keep the, uh, the project moving if the applicants, uh...
If I may interject.
...comfortable with a two-week period.
I'm going to be out of town two weeks from now. Can you make it three weeks?
Even better.
Or four.
Yeah.
We're, we're in the, we'd have to continue it to a date, be October 9th is your...
Fine.
That's the, the cycle and that would actually give us some time to look at it and...
Very good then. If there's nothing further, roll call vote, please, Michelle.
Ms. Conrad?
Aye.
Ms. Marantz?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Grinch?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberger?
Aye.
Mr. Caffrey?
No.
Mr. Klachko?
Aye. Motion carries six, one.
Mr. Chairman, just, just to give you an idea, Jing and I have been reviewing the, uh, legislative history on the zone changes. We've been sitting here. In '95, this was part of the, uh, packet of material that was recommended by the commission to the council evidently, and I don't have the minutes, but it looks like, based upon the adoption, it was not approved in '95. It came back in the second round of amendments in '97 and was approved, so this is, we've been debating this property for a while.
We're on our way to getting it resolved. Thank you for your time and, uh, we'll see you in a month. All right, we had, uh, one issue that on the early part of our agenda was approval of the minutes for August 14th. Are there any, uh, additions or corrections?
Chairman, I'm prepared to move the approval of those minutes.
I'll second.
Motion by, uh, Mr. Matthews, second by Ms. Grinch. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number eight, commission work program, Mr. Evans.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, item number three is listed under public hearings. You probably should continue that item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um... Yeah, I guess, uh, based on the, uh, recommendations, uh, it's just to continue to a date certain or just to take it on?
Because this has been tracking from meeting to meeting, we would suggest you do it to the next meeting. I, I will tell you that, uh, you know, the Tennis Club Neighborhood Association has asked that we have a little neighborhood meeting with the, uh, property owner and we're trying to get that arranged and that was one of the reasons why I didn't hear Commissioner Schoenberger's, uh, question. I was talking to Alex about the timing of that. So, we do need to continue that one and have action on it, sir.
Is that, uh, what, the 25th? Is that the date then?
Twenty-fifth meeting?
Yes, sir. Entertained a motion then to continue, uh, case, uh, Flight Point 0909 to, uh, the 25th of September?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Marantz, second by Mr. Matthews. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Conrad?
Aye.
Ms. Marantz?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries unanimously. Thanks for pointing that out. Uh, okay, back to, uh, item number eight, commission work programs.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any additional updates on that one.
All right. Uh, item number nine, city council actions.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a, a couple of items there. At the, uh, council's meeting, uh, last week, they acted upon a few things that, uh, might be of interest to the planning commission. Uh, they did hold the public hearing on Eldorado Mobile Home, uh, Park. They did remove the conditions of approval that the judge basically said, "You shall." Um, it was, um, a very, uh, interesting meeting and to see a group of homeowners, the room was full here, hoping that the council didn't have to do what they had to do and, and they accepted it. They, they realized the city fought the good fight and, uh, pushed as far as we probably could and, uh, even though their hearts were different, they seemed to accept the fact the city council had to do what they did and, uh, that was, that was a tough one for the council as, as the commission well knows. You worked hard on that also. So, we'll wait and see what the judge says regarding those actions. The council did, uh, act upon the California Desert Conservation Area Plan for the BLM and took a look at the trails program. And what I'll do is, is we'll get you a copy of the actual document that the, uh, council adopted. They basically said, um, off-road vehicle use in the Windy Point area and the Whitewater Flood Plain, uh, don't do that. That was part of the plan. It's inconsistent with city policy. They also discussed or recommended that the Palm Hills area be looked at very carefully for vehicular access and pointed out that the city has a plan to build a road, um, through an area that the BLM plan says there may not be a road and if there is a road, uh, the only people that can use it are governmental agencies with a permit and property owners with a very difficult permit to get. Uh, the council talked about trail usage and basically questioned whether or not there was enough information to close all the trails on a seasonal basis that had been proposed and recommended that certain ones be open. Um, I think the BLM did a, a very commendable job of trying to deal with the trail issue. Uh, even though we disagreed, they, they pulled many groups together, uh, came up with what they thought was the best compromise to protect sheep and allow access even though the council felt that it was a bit restrictive. Uh, the council expressed some concerns about the Big Horn Sheep Recovery Program, particularly the augmentation programs and how that's done and, uh, you know, a concern about just sharing of public information. Uh, those are the key areas on that particular item, but what we'll do is we'll get you a copy of the, the action. That action will affect the California Desert Conservation Area Plan, will also be part of the discussion with the National Monument Advisory Group and former Mayor Bogart is our, uh, advisor and he's going to take that message to his community, or to the committee on the National Monument. And, uh, the council also approved the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program that the commission looked at in study session. Um, Dave Barakian worked very hard on that document. You, you put, uh, a good amount of effort into making sure that it, it fit community standards and the council was quite pleased, uh, that it came back with a lot of community support, uh, to deal with traffic calming and those are the key land use or planning type issues on the agenda. Um, I do have a, a handout for you and I, I won't go into a lot of elaboration. The council had a study session last night. Uh, the, one of the prime issues that they discussed, uh, during the meeting was dealing with, uh, what would happen if Major U, uh, were to be approved, which means the utility tax was overridden and would not be available. You know, it's roughly a $6 million cut. The council looked at a very wide range of options from basically just cutting operational programs to just 20% across the board staffing reduction to combinations thereof. And what the council's objective was to, uh, adopt something that the voters could take a look at and say, "This is the snapshot in time." If the council had to cut $6 million that night, here's what they would have done and here's the programs. Uh, the range of options, you know, that, that were included as it affects, uh, the duties of the planning commission had, um, uh, 2.7, uh, planning employees in the worst-case situation and it was 4.3, we share an employee, 4.3 employees in the building and safety department. Uh, we would have to make pretty substantial service cuts, uh, if we were to live with that type of reduction, um, and that was the worst-case proposal of 20% across the board. Uh, we would probably not have a permit center open, um, during the day or the afternoons. We would probably be, only be open half-day, uh, so people would knock on City Hall, see employees and the door would be locked, uh, because we would have to be doing the work and returning the phone calls and during a half-day period, um, I can assure you, we would have customers completely filling the lobby at times and probably waiting outdoors. Uh, there are times we're just about full right now, open, uh, from 8:00 until 5:00 PM, including being open during lunch, and a lot of people come in at lunchtime because it's quiet. Um, so, it's not an item for commission discussion, but what I, I feel I, I need to do is, is provide you with the information. You can take a look at it. Um, and the council last night also approved a, a public information program where they're going to put information out and they, they approved bringing on a consulting firm to do it so that all the material gets mailed at the appropriate times and is printed on time so that it all goes out to, to reach the voters and the residents. They chose that this is such a significant issue that instead of just sending materials to registered voters, some of the materials will be sent to every, uh, site address in the community, which is 35,000. Um, so, a pretty broad campaign and we, and the council has to send both sides. Now, they can't just say, "We want you to do this." They can't advocate a position, but they can provide information and that's what the, the campaign, uh, program, uh, will be and let the voters decide. But we'll pass that out to the commission and if you have any individual questions or comments, you could certainly give me a call, uh, but we'll pass that out at the end of the meeting. Mr. Chairman, uh, that is the, wait a minute, you had one more to do with design review. We had a, a need for design review members or a planning commissioner to attend design review in April or May. We just do that as a reminder.
Oh, April and May is covered.
Yeah, around December, we'll, we'll actually ask for volunteers, but if anybody...
We can have a new, uh, program for design review by then, right?
Hopefully.
Or close to it. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Uh, then commission staff reports and requests. I had two things. One, you mentioned that the city council approved the traffic calming, uh, issues. What's the status of Mesquite Demuth Park area? Is that, uh, on schedule?
Well, it, it's a plan and before we take it up to council for their review, we had to run it by the Parks and Recreation Commission and, uh, that meeting is either underway now or it was, I think it's underway right now in the other conference room. Um, and I don't know what the outcome of it is with the Parks and Rec Commission, uh, but I know that engineering had to run it by them, get both commissions' thoughts and ideas and then take it on up to council.
Okay. Second issue, you made some comments about area-wide conservation issues and things like that. What, uh, there's been a lot of, uh, mention in the press and, uh, about the Riverside County, uh, general plan, uh, update and there's hearings going on. Are, is our city represented at those hearings or, or do we provide any input to the county, uh, on that or are we affected or what, what's the status as far as the city's...
We've, I've monitored the progress on the plan and, um, it's pretty consistent with what the existing plan is around our community. Um, be honest with you, you know, the, the plan is, is very complicated. I'm not reviewing it on a countywide basis, uh, but I do have an environmental impact report that if one of you would like to read, it's that thick in one notebook, uh, for the, the plan. Uh, what we'll do is if you'd like to actually take a look at the land use maps, we could put that in an upcoming study session, um, and then if you have concerns, we could, we could schedule that for formal action.
I wasn't, I wasn't really saying that, that we necessarily need to get into it. I just wondered whether there are any aspects of it that are readily, uh, that we acknowledge will affect the city of Palm Springs or that we should be aware of or that we believe staff should be aware of.
The, the land use plan, you know, uh, on the contiguous properties, um, is pretty well consistent with, I think, our vision, so I haven't seen a great need to weigh in. Um, but I haven't read every policy in the plan, uh, probably won't be able to.
Okay. Anything further? Thank you very much for your comments and meeting adjourned.